I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the resolute and justice for all.
First on the agenda, we have Board of Education norms. I haven't read through these in a while, so bear with me, I'm gonna read through them tonight. These are the Board of Education norms. Decision-making focus on the best interests of students while ensuring that decisions are fiscally responsible, take into account current data, consider the impact on staff, and align with our mission of working together to create success at St. Gen R2 and beyond. Preparation and effective use of time. Come prepared for Board of Education meetings by reading the board packets prior to Board of Education meetings and proactively asking questions to allow time for answers to be collected and researched and then shared at the meeting. Speak with one voice. After deliberation and consensus on a subject, move forward together as a collective board while supporting decision in words and actions privately and publicly. Do not speak on behalf of the board without authorization from the board. Act as ambassadors for the St. Genevieve R2 School District by consistently advocating for public education and staying up to date on happenings and initiatives within and around the school district. And listen to understand and communicate to explain. Respect and value the diverse perspectives, opinions, and contributions of all district stakeholders, including fellow board members, students and their families, employees, patrons, and community members. Be open-minded and engage in active listening while being aware of non-burble behaviors as well. Encourage open and honest communication on consistent, continuous basis. Nurture a spirit of harmony, cooperation, respect, and connectedness. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda of the February 21st, 2020, P, 2023 for either our open session meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA Monthly Report.
Welcome to the February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the governor's State of the State address last month. On January 18th, Governor Parson delivered his annual State of the State address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Education was once again a focus.
Now, as a product of public education, the father of a schoolteacher, the grandfather of a first-year schoolteacher and preschooler, I know the American dream could not be possible for so many without a quality education. This year, we will again fully fund the foundation formula with an additional $117 million to ensure Missouri schools are receiving the support they need.
During his speech, Governor Parson detailed the progress his administration has made in education funding, teacher pay, and workforce development. The governor's budget proposal also includes $233 million for school transportation needs, $32 million to expand the career ladder program, and continues the teacher baseline salary program that raised teacher pay from $25,000 to $38,000 per year. Additionally, the governor proposed $50 million for school safety grants for Missouri schools to make physical security investments on their campuses, develop security plans, establish school resource officer programs, and increase active threat trainings. Governor Parson also requested $56 million to expand pre-kindergarten options.
There is a clear need to do better when it comes to early childhood. Let's meet this moment for Missouri families, Missouri kids, and our businesses.
There are many issues being considered in the current session of the General Assembly that are of interest to MSBA and school board members throughout the state. As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts, periodic webinars, and MSBA's Action Center website. We urge you to stay in contact with your legislators during the session and communicate to them the impact legislation will have on your school district. MSBA Director of Governmental Relations, Brant Shields, says that in addition to advocating for your district, it's also important to serve as an educator to legislators.
There's not really a space for subject matter experts in our legislature. They have to be a foot deep and a mile wide across a whole bunch of issues. So be that subject matter expert for them when it comes to public education and be that trusted source, so when they have questions, they know that they can come to you as a locally-elected school board member.
On that note, don't miss your chance to visit your legislator at the Capitol during MSBA's Advocacy Day. Known formerly as Legislative Forum, Advocacy Day is scheduled for March 28th in Jefferson City. The event will be preceded by a spring virtual meeting on March 1st and weekly lunch and learn sessions on Fridays to provide legislative updates on the issues that matter to you. Check the MSBA website for registration information for all of these events. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March, as proclaimed by Governor Parson. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. And finally, on January 31st, parents, school board members, school leaders, and supporters from St. Louis Public Schools, Normandy Schools Collaborative, and Kansas City Public Schools visited the Capitol for the Parent Day of Action. The group was recognized by both the House and Senate and then set out to visit with legislators before ending the day with a rally for supporters in the Capitol Rotunda. Matt Davis, President of the City of St. Louis Board of Education, explained why it's important to tell the stories of local schools.
It's important to have the parents come, meet their legislators, meet legislators that they don't necessarily know but are passing bills that affect our schools and our students, and tell their stories. And to just sort of explain from their perspective why they are so happy with their public schools and why it's important to strengthen them.
Kansas City School Board Member Jennifer Wolfsee says that although the Parents' Day of Action involved St. Louis and Kansas City parents, advocating for public schools is for everyone regardless of district size.
I mean, really, there's more similarities between Kansas City and St. Louis and rural schools than there are differences sometimes.
That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting and for all that you do to ensure all students succeed.
Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda. I would ask for the other one.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond when appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. For policy VDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following guidelines and procedures will follow. In order to speak in a public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once, and each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. I have no public comments.
I do not either.
Next, we have reported superintendent.
Thank you. The first item on my report, there is a note of appreciation in the board docs from Mr. Draper, thanking you for the tuition reimbursement program and basically supporting his professional growth. It's a very nice thank-you letter. Next, K through 12 enrollment. Our official count date is the last Wednesday in January, or since we were out of school the next day. So our K through 12 enrollment, if you look at the bottom of the data, January enrollment this year was 1,764. That is down a few students from the previous year. So I feel like, you know, we're staying right in there. So we're very happy with that number. Of course, we would like it to be much higher, but, you know, it's a good number for us. The pre-K enrollment, as you see with the other years of data here, from the first day, which is an estimate, to our January count grows. But again, that's because our parents' teachers are out there working, finding children who qualify, especially for our early childhood special education program. So there's growth in our preschool numbers. Any questions on enrollment? The next item is just an informational slide, as they said in the MSBA Board Report. Next month is Board Member Recognition Month. Sorry, I forgot to take the word "week" out of there. So we thought we would just throw it out there and let the public know that next month is Board Member Recognition.
You've not seen those pictures yet, so.
It'd be okay.
So there's a little surprise there. Next is just a reminder about kindergarten registrations. Accepting appointments began today, so I imagine the phones at the elementary were on fire this morning with all the calls coming in. St. Gene Elementary has their registration on Saturday, or their screening, on Saturday, March 25th, 8 to 2. Bloomsdale's is April 1st from 8 to 1. Was it a busy day, ladies?
I don't know. It was extremely busy. We were at 50 calls today.
50? Okay. Well, if you have a preschooler or a kindergarten, a student coming to kindergarten and you would like them screened, we would really appreciate it if you would call, get them signed up for this event, and we'll go through the screenings and help you out.
I noticed like this year's graduating class was, what, like 110? And then I look at kindergarten and first grade, you're looking at 156 and 149. So they're certainly growing.
Yes. My next item are the principal reports. So... Looks like Bloomsdale Elementary is gonna go first.
Okay, and I like to start with the positive office referrals. We're gonna start with the good news. Many students were portraying the seven habits that we practiced out of Bloomsdale. We have, starting at the top, Louis Guilford, Carly Beatt, Liam Edwards, Oakland Paisley, Ann Colton-Bate. Then next row, Lincoln Nugent, Levi Karen, Gabriella Keith, Lily Schwint, Jack Baloo, Kayden Marler.
Cash Stolzer.
And then the bottom row, Daniel Klump, Levi Karen again, Jaden Hogan, Jay Swinkler, Kendall Wagner, Sophia Serton, and Rogan Zusten. They were all excited to receive their award, and they are keeping those in their leader binders. That's where they keep their certificates to show their parents, so. And on January 11th, we had our second quarter awards assembly. The students received awards and got to walk the red carpet. As you can see, Ms. Rice and Ms. Guilford did partake as well. Evidently, the students know us dance the gritty kind. They all did the gritty walking down the red carpet. They had different awards. The Certified Smile Maker, Awesome Author, Working Wonder, and Braggin' Dragons. So they were excited to receive their award and be recognized for that. On January 3rd, we celebrated the 100th Day of School. Mostly, it was our first kindergarten and first-grade teachers that participated in this with their students to recognize the exciting things the students have learned after 100 days of school. And so the day was all centered around the number 100. Tied in a lot of math on that day. And then on February 9th, our third-grade students participated in a bell concert with Mr. Friedmeyer. And I will say, this was one of the neatest little concerts I had seen in a while because we're used to singing and performing and dancing. And this was all using bells. He said the students began preparing for the concert by carefully analyzing their bell part that was shown on, it was projected on the big screen. They were shown how to properly hold the bell and how to play it when their colored dot appeared on the screen. Students were also shown proper concert etiquette, how to enter, leave, mat talk, bow, and musicianship. So it was an exciting evening for the students. They did a wonderful job. And that was it for me, but looking ahead, next week, we have Read on Missouri Week, and we have several exciting things planned. And I know many of you have signed up to come read to our students. I encourage you to come out. We love having you in the building, so I appreciate you signing up. And if you haven't yet, Ms. Foff has that. I think, I believe she shared it out with all of you. And then, of course, the construction is the big excitement at Bloomsdale, but I believe Bailey will have that, maybe some of that later. So we're all very excited. The students noticed today that the ceiling tiles were out, so that was a big deal to them. So it's exciting times at Bloomsdale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hello.
I don't know if she'll be able to get, I think I'll look at this one. It's a little close right there. So at St. Genevieve Elementary, we kicked off the second semester with, we did a One School, One Book initiative, and we did Dragons in a Bag. And we used our funds to buy every student in the school a book. And we did a kickoff assembly, and then we took sort of, guest readers did a chapter, and we did videos, and we put those out to the students, and the teachers shared those. And we did have some chapters where the teachers read the chapters to the students, and we did the finale with the three doctors right there finishing up as our guest readers. And so that was nice to get books into the hands of all of our students, so that was a great way to kick off second semester. And then we also had our second-quarter power leaders, and they're featured there in the middle. And they were selected, and then the second-quarter trolley was there. But then we also had the first semester power leader ceremony. And then we had Bailey Ram and Emmeline Platon. They emceed the celebration. And there were a couple of pictures from the ceremony. The committee kind of put together a new set of decorations, and it was all superhero-themed, and it was really cute. But you didn't get to see the whole stage because I don't know whoever took the pictures, they didn't capture the whole stage, but it was really super cute. The whole stage was a superhero theme. So that was a great way to start second semester. And then we had a lot of things going on here. So we'll start on the left, and then we'll get to the fun step on the right. So we had, in January, we celebrated our December Students of the Month. We had K2 and 3, 5 luncheons. And then at the bottom, we had the January Students of the Month. We celebrated them in February. And Mr. Kingery is way better at taking those selfies than I am. Like, he was out that day, and I tried really, really hard, but he is so much better at that than I am. And then we had our second-quarter Dragon Track rewards. And in the middle, when some of the classes spun, they landed on PE with the principals. And so Mr. Kingery and I had like seven classes earned PE with the principals, and we're like, oh my gosh, we cannot do this seven times. So we're like, what are we gonna do? So we combined classes, and we had little kickball tournaments. And so we have three different times where we played kickball with the classes, and so that was a lot of fun. And so those are pictures there in the middle. And then on the right, this was like the culminating activity, we had like six classes landed on duct tape Mr. Kingery. And I think only one of our classes was a fifth-grade class. The rest of them were like kindergarten and first-grade classes, and then we had one resource class. So you can only imagine that the duct tape wasn't really tight on there. And so I have a beginning, middle, and end. And so you can see in the middle, he was like, oh my gosh, this is not working. And so I had to zoom in on his face because he kept looking at me, and he kept saying, I am going to faceplant. And I'm like, oh, you're gonna be fine. And then, you're gonna be fine. And then I kind of cropped it out, but the bottom picture, you can see like Coach started to pull the mats away, and he already was like, you could hear the tape ripping away from the wall, and he started to slide. And somehow, like, Mr. Mueller must have been watching like our Zoom.
We were watching.
Oh. Oh, he called in to tell us that our duct tape wasn't strong enough. We didn't pick the right kind, and, but it was all in fun, and the kids loved it. But when you know better, you do better, so we'll buy gorilla tape next time.
If it's concerned, I just had to leave.
Yeah. But it was all in fun, so that was, it was a lot of fun. And then this slide is a whole bunch of everything. So in February, we celebrated our counselors, Mrs. Kingery and Mrs. Griminger. And so we have some students pictured there with them. And then Mrs. Beckett, who does our social media, she had a little thank-you post that she put out on social media. And then down at the bottom, we also celebrated School Resource Officer's Day, and we had some gifts that the building got for her. And she, Officer Clark, wouldn't let us take a picture of her, so we had to go find one to put on there of her, so that's what she got. And then we also celebrated the 100th Day, and we have Mrs. Brown's kindergarten class up there. And I just had to put one of the little pictures up there of one of our little kindergarten friends. They use like a photo aging app. And that was just so cute of her. She just, so cute. And then at the bottom, we had some Valentine activities. In the fifth grade, every year, they do sign sort of a competition, and those were just some of those there. And then second semester, the Dancing Dragons, they brought in some new kindergarten and first-grade recruits. And then some of the students that wanted off, they were able to get off. So this is our new group of Dancing Dragons that will take us through the end of this school year, and they will start next school year. That's fine. And then these are our Positive Office Referrals. Some of these were from January that we didn't present in January, and so that's why you have a couple of Christmas hats in there. Our top row, Elizabeth Kelly, Chase Denzie, Jackson Wolfe, Malaya Evans, Jason Miles, and Paxton Hook. And our middle row, Bentley Cornell, Macy Champion, Leila Reinhardt, Mason Gilbert, Jackson Wolfe with his second referral that time, and Jameson Walk. And at the bottom, Vera Rutler and Hunter Klein. And then our last slide, our January and February future teacher and superstaff were Cheryl Woolstetter and Miranda Hines and Rose Feitler and Peggy Donard. And I think I might have gotten that. Oh, that's right. And those ladies were just nominated for their hard work in the building and everything they do. So that's it for St. Gene Elementary.
So first up, we have our spelling bee winners. On, starting on the left, we have Joseph Rutler, Shaylen Shmento, Reese Webenmeyer, and Silas Sansucci. I think Shaylen got first.
And then next is... Second quarter wings is, so wings is like, if you have like no missing assignments, no Ds or Fs, you like get this reward. It's like a one-hour reset, you get a free hour. You do games like Twister or Jenga or Connect Four, and then there's usually a snack. And yeah. There's also volleyball, anything you want to play on the court, basketball. And basically, it gives students an opportunity to get a free hour. So personally, I think that it helps students push farther to reach that goal, to get there. Next up is the Clavius Project. It is at SLU. Our robotics team, Mr. Roth is a teacher. They went up there on a weekends, and we got second in the gold one. Some of our students got 100 on their test, which is really good for them, guessing. East Central Honors Choir is on the next slide up there. They went to East Central, they showed them their vocal skills, and yeah. And then Scholar Bowl season is underway. We have a great, unique group of students who are striving to reach their goal. We have some fundraisers continuing through the end of this month. Sixth grade is selling Little Caesar's Pizza Kids, and then seventh grade is selling Otis Funkmeyer, and eighth grade is selling chocolate bars. Dragons on Fire is like just for kids who go above and beyond in doing the seven habits. But some that got it this semester are Ashton Dom, Clayton Webb, Sydney Niesling, Lucas Martin, Kenley Anne Brawley, Addison Wilson, Jalen Pipkin, and Harley Courtway. Riley Pollak, Blair Bowman, Blake Grass, Courtney Gunther, Wyatt Schmelzle, Haley Schweiss, Dominic Dimicurio, and Mackenzie Knight. Josh Whitworth, Emily Sawtell, Anthony Apt, Owen Ross, Kayden Mueller, Jacob Gross, and Hunter Garrett, who got it twice. He's at the top. He's just a very great student, who's always such a gentleman to all, and this is just always good, okay? So yeah. Next, we have our Spotlight Award. This month, we have it every single month, and this month is Mr. Corey Samples and the quotes from all the different people that nominated him. The first one is, Corey is such a cool dude. He does what is asked of him and what is needed to make sure his kiddos are successful. I love listening and watching him with the kids and how they respond to him. Corey goes above and beyond for all our kids, even going to extreme levels of having dinner with them with one student each week. Corey has a heart of gold. He makes personal connections with kids and makes a huge difference for those kiddos. He is such a fun and like loving teacher. He cares for all students. He's always like, what's up, K-Dog, in the hallway, so. What's ahead is NJ Test Locking, which is February 24th, which is this Friday. Fifth grade visits the SGMSS. This is March 7th, Fifth Grade Parent Night. MAJHAA Honors Band at Central. On the 11th of March, there is a Jazz Fest at MAC. On the 22nd of March, the Big Smiles Dental Clinic is coming in. And on March 26th, there's the SGMSS Spring Play, and they would love to see everyone there. It's called Murder in the Air, by the way. So this month is gonna be really like sports-heavy because it's like tournament season. Okay, so some of the stuff on this title slide, up on the top middle, you can see Mr. Apt's class building the second bench in the senior tee. And then later, we'll talk about the black wall behind it. And then on the very bottom middle, you can see some of the cadet teachers with their kindergarten students or their first-grade students, just kind of making t-shirts and stuff.
These are our Positive Office Referrals. And we have our Elk Student of the Month, who is Brenna Weiner, and our Rotary Student of the Month, which was Laney Amitt. And then our Positive Office Referrals is Jordan Grau, twice, Brendan Sexton, Sarah Bone, Gavin Hook, Chloe Wolk, Trey Blume, Allison McCrory, Allison Bowen, or Alyssa Bowen, Taysha DeCle, Carson Krylik, Hannah Bly, Xana Powell, Miranda Ponder, Mariah Apt, Savannah German, Haley Perdek, Lily Fanastock, Ethan Maloney, Ezra Wolk, Kylie Harris, Dalton Bowen, Chloe Gross, and Faith Portwood.
Why is that always, that video? This is like the third most in a row, it keeps showing up. Okay, so Aiden Boyer scored his 1,000th point. Well, points, at the Arcadia Valley game. Oh, yeah. Kayden signed with McIndry University. Do you know who that was? That's right. The Boys Conference, they placed second, losing to Park Hill Central, and it was such a rough game, but they kept them under a continuous clock, so that's better than the alternative. And then Ricky broke the SGHS shooting record during that conference game. And then I spoke with his mom, Laura, and he is currently, so I think the record was 1,408, and currently, he's at 1,454. And there's still more games to go.
And also, it's not on there, but, um... But our Scholar Bowl team, our varsity Scholar Bowl team is currently 3 and 6. We have no seniors on the team, so a handful of juniors and a few sophomores as well. And our JV team is undefeated, with mostly freshmen on their teams as well. On this slide, we have the girls' basketball team. They're playing for fifth or sixth in the conference tournament. And then wrestling, our state qualifiers, we had to send off today for them. The girls play second in districts, and then six of the girl wrestlers qualify per state. And then with boys wrestling, they play second in the Class 2 District 1 Tournament, with 12 of their wrestlers are going to state.
And before we move on, that girls' basketball, they're going to districts March 1st. It's at... March first, it's at seven and it's here. So for anyone wanting to go to that. Oh, and the girl senior night is tomorrow. And then the boy's senior night is the next day on Thursday. Oh, and today, if nobody knew, we sent the wrestlers off today. Oh, just I'm just kidding.
We did. We did.
Oh, we did. Okay, so our FBLA students, um five of them placed like at least five at districts and I have their names written down. Emily Oliver, Katie Ani, Trey Blume and Jeremiah Coons placed first in their categories. Um, Hannah Arons and Drew Merriman placed second and third as a team. Colton Capps and Logan Moore placed fourth and first as a team. Carly Bosser plays fifth in her category. Heidi Schmelzle plays third and second alone and Chloe Stafford plays second place. And then the two pictures on the right are our counselors and holding their little signs and celebrating their counselor's appreciation that week. Okay, um also, so I think we had some like technical difficulties. Um, so rolly chair basketball was a super fun week. It really just gets the morale going and it every student enjoys it. Like it's something for everybody to have fun at and like look forward to at the end of the week. Those are some of the crazy pictures we had. I can clear. I don't have the thing. But so if we have time, there's this two minute video from the DLP crew and they made what they call a hype video for rolly chair basketball and it's just some of the teachers who are playing. So do we have time?
Well, we know we have the better spin on this team.
Do you smell with the bar? It's cooking.
It was training phenomenal. Um, I wish I might be able to get it next week, but there was also this really, really, really awesome wrestling hype video. And I mean, it was pretty like chilling. It was awesome. It wasn't on the funny specter as much.
Uh, this is our teacher of the month for February. It's Ms. Newman. She's our uh fax teacher. And her, a quote that is about hers. This teacher read what I was going, oh, this teacher read what I was going through and started caring even more about me. She was next to me the whole time I was upset. She has just been really understanding and caring for each and every one of her students. She cares for everyone like they're her own child. While I'm in her class, I feel like I won't be judged by how safe of a classroom and how friendly her and other students are. Thank you for the service to our students at SGHS, Ms. Newman.
And then if we haven't.
You believed in Santa for life, eight years. You can believe in yourself for five minutes.
I think that's it.
Thank you all.
And I updated the slide. There are a couple of safety reports in the board in board docs. So it'll probably refa- refresh in five minutes. So. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Next, we have unfinished business on the agenda and the first item is the instructional program presentation for middle school English Language Arts.
All right, but welcome. Um, my name's Crystal Keno. I teach seventh and eighth grade Language Arts at the middle school. Um, this is Carla Bosler.
Hi, I teach um eighth grade ELA and reading. And then I teach advanced eighth grade and then I have seventh and eighth grade drama.
And I'm Ashley Worthlove. I teach sixth grade reading and language arts.
Kelly Jokers, also sixth grade Language and Reading Arts.
We show in co-talk English, our ELA and reading and then program reading.
Brian Mueller, program uh ELA, sixth, seventh and eighth and co-talk seventh and co-talk.
There you go.
All right, thanks. That's actually. Okay, um, these are kind of our department goals as opposed to language classes. We uh want to foster our love and passion for reading. You're gonna see a lot of our projects and a lot of our reading pictures. That's something that we feel very passionate about. We want to build capable writers to drive past Think Gen High School even to be, you know, productive in the twenty-first century and to develop and promote critical thinking skill. All right, so these are our classes. We kind of went over them as we introduced ourselves, sixth, seventh and eighth grade ELA. Um, Carla and I have seventh and eighth grade advanced. We have sixth grade reading. Um, we do have a seventh and eighth grade reading class. It's kind of a remedial class um to help our kids that are kind of falling behind. We also offer co-talk classes in sixth, seventh and eighth. Um, and have program reading for sixth, seventh and eighth Language and Reading classes.
Okay, so um Ashley and I are gonna do what we do best and we're just gonna bounce back and forth. So I'll start with uh sixth grade ELA. Uh, this is what we've accomplished so far this year. So our writing, we've done a descriptive writing, a narrative, a research, persuasive persuasive is always middle schoolers favorite because they get to argue. It's our job to teach them how to argue correctly, cite their evidence, use research, all that good stuff. Um, we also do a friendly letter, figurative language.
They do weekly podcasts. So every week they're listening to a podcast to practice their listening skills. That's one that's always hit. So and they love them. They're actually really, I mean, they want to listen to them because they're actually really engaging too. So that's something really fun that we do in there. And then also obviously throughout the week with our bellwork and everything else, we're doing many different language, writing, other skills too, grammar skills throughout. That's mixed in through all of that too.
Um, some things we have not accomplished this year but will is poetry unit where they will learn different types of poetry and have to write their own and also do a compare and contrast writing.
So for sixth grade reading, um so far we, I mean throughout mostly in first quarter and even second quarter, we really hit the short stories for nonfiction and fiction. And that's what we hit hard, first of all, to develop their understanding of plot and going over story elements before we would dive into any novel, which now officially in second semester, we have started our first whole class novel, which is Refugee, um which is a class favorite, fan favorite. They absolutely love Refugee. We did link any video for you guys to watch later if you really want to, so you can watch, but it is um it's just a great story. It teaches them so many things about empathy, learning about different cultures, what other kids go through in different places, um other things in history. It's a realistic fiction. But it just, it goes over so many amazing different things that we can touch on in one book for them and they love it.
Thing is, all three characters are their age. So some of this stuff is relatable and some of the stuff is not relatable to them because they are all three characters are refugees. So our our students don't understand that, um which is cool for them to process and figure out.
And I I will say that one of it is in Syria, which the earthquake just happened in Turkey and Syria. So even my students, and I know you have mentioned it too, had said something and it obviously it was back with the Syrian war, but they were able to make that connection that that just happened in Syria and reading about it. So that was neat to be able to bring that into it too as well.
Yep. Um, so we also do a lot of nonfiction, obviously. One of the new things for us this year is a program called Reading Plus. This is a completely online program. Our students do about fifteen minutes a day. Um, but which sounds like a lot and is a lot. It's hard for us to give up those fifteen minutes, but we've seen a lot of growth in our students. Um, and the cool thing is they take like a diagnostic and then every week they're assigned lessons and either reading or vocabulary will change. One week they might have three, one week they might have seven lessons in reading. Um, but it's based on how they do that week. It does fluency, it does their reading level, um vocabulary, course vocabulary comprehension. We can get on at any point. We can see where they add, where they're at. We get notifications when they level up. So then we can just hit send notification. They get an email in within the program and I think that's cool.
And they'll respond, thanks.
The other thing we like about it, so they take a diagnostic at the beginning, there's a mid and then the end of the year. Um, the really cool thing is we sat, we looked at our data again.
From N from NWA?
Yep, from NWA, we could see growth and then we kind of matched it to this program too. And they are correlating very well, which makes us happy because you know, when you get a new program, you don't know. We actually got this program and fell into our laps. Uh, when we went to River PD last year, there was Windsor that talked highly about this program. Our seven.
I think it was just those two.
Us were like, well.
Let's try it. Yeah.
We need something that gauges, because when I first started here, we were using old school like gates, paper physical tests. Gave a grade level and I feel like we've gone through different things. And so this is probably the first thing I think that Ashley and I can really relate. It can be a pretty accurate reading level and easily.
Yes. And also it bases it on other things too. And of course they have to put a little bit of effort in too, you know, because it'll give them, if they if they go through and they rush, it'll give them more comprehension and then they're like, oh yeah, this isn't what I wanted the next week because it restarts every Monday. But we were able to see, um we based it on from fall NWA to our winter NWA and we were pleased with.
And it's also not just for like struggling readers. Our kiddos that are reading on a like seventh and eighth grade level now, like we're, we've kind of come back a little bit on it and allow them to read their library books more because they really enjoy reading some of them. But they're like, this is hard. Well, yeah, you're sixth grader. If you're reading on eighth grade level, it's gonna get hard. Like, but it's awesome. It's enrichment for them too. So.
And then we will, um this year still after we finish Refugee, we are going to hit Bulk Tales. And then also we have um another towards the end of the year, um we read School. So. And that's sixth grade.
All right, so I usually do seventh grade with Audrey Lomax. She's home cuddling a very sweet baby girl. Um, so I'm gonna take over her seventh grade. So far this year, we restart up the year with short stories, going over plots, going over story elements, all that, kind of reviewing. Um, we already hit A Long Walk to Water. This is a based off a true story, um of Salvador Dúzquez from um Africa and how his family, um he gets torn from his family um due to a civil war going on and he's kind of forced to survive on his own in Africa in the savanna with no water, trying to figure out how to manage not getting caught up into the war and just surviving. Um, and it's fans, I love it because it allows them, like they said with Refugee, it gives them the chance to see what life's like in another culture and to develop that empathy. So this book allows it. Um, and then we have The Outsiders. It's probably one of my fan favorite. I love The Outsiders. We're just finishing, we just finished it today. Um, and so my heart's a little broken. This is part of my favorite book, but the kids love it too. They can relate so much to the characters. Even though the story takes place in the nineteen sixties, they can see themselves in at least one of the greasers. Um, and so it allows, it's so much fun to hear them. They always, they always have great conversations. They always like talk about who their favorite is. Um, we hit nonfiction throughout the year. We tried to keep up with like news articles. Um, and really trying to keep them talking about what's kind of going on in our lives and related to them. And we talk about annotating and pulling and making conversations and those deep thoughts from there. One of the big focuses this year has been on independent reading. Um, they have been very, you're gonna see some pictures of some of our very um fluent regulars in the library and they are doing an amazing job. And what we love is that probably for some of our kids, they may be finishing like, gosh, I have kids that are probably like finishing fifty books already and it's only in February. And maybe a year ago, they may only have finished maybe five or ten. So it's so exciting to see and we just think of all the skills and like the reading that they're doing is awesome. Um, we've already done a descriptive and a narrative writing. Um, they have a lot of fun with those because those are usually fictional and they can develop. Um, we're getting ready to start figurative language and poetry, which is, I love that. Uh, we have another novel. I hope we're gonna be able to get to it. It's from Michael Bay for herself, twenty-five. It's kind of like a sci-fi. So they are probably gonna love that. It's about this kid who is very unique. He has like an electrical power um that nobody really knows about and he's kind of being hunted because of this power. And he finds that he's not alone. There are other kids like him. So it's kind of cool. And it's a series. So usually those, if they can read the first, will jump into the rest. And then finally, we always do a personal reflection at the end of the year to kind of allow them to take a moment, not just to look at like the year for themselves. And by the end of seventh grade, they've really started to kind of hold into who they want to be and they start thinking about it. So this becomes a really fun kind of project for them.
Okay, uh, we both teach eighth grade uh ELA together. So we've done our short stories. Our whole class novel that we read so far this year is Scythe by Neil Schusterman. It's a science fiction. The kids love it because you have a male and a female protagonist and the story, you know, keeps flip flopping between these two characters. And um one of them will become a scythe at the end of it. And so you always have who you're rooting for. And we do a lot of like compare and contrast, like who do you think should win? Why? Uh, so we do that writing piece in there with it. We do a lot with the novel because it is pretty, it's a long one. Uh, then uh we try to weave nonfiction in throughout all your long, different nonfiction articles, different articles of the week. Again, really heavy on independent reading. And we're gonna kind of talk about for eighth grade, we set a kind of uh far out there goal, but we ask each kid to try to read a million words this year. And we actually have kids that have reached that and we'll show you a slide of the kids that have reached that. But right now, Mr. Mueller and I co-teach and one of our kiddos in fourth hour, I think this will happen tomorrow, based on all the data that has happened. But yeah. Um, so we have them record their readings on these reading logs. So mine are all sorry, this is kind of like sloppy and they're falling, but they are all logging what they read. We calculate page numbers with them. Uh, while we grade like what they do with this kid, he's gonna hit two million, I think tomorrow. So I'm like a really super proud teacher. He um has a maybe a bet going on with Mr. Mueller that if he accomplishes his two million by the end of the week, you know? Um, and so it's been a big hype in our room and so it's really exciting to see. Um, it's even exciting to see the kids who hadn't finished the book in over a year or two years or whatever, they might tell me that everybody's finished at least two to three this year. Um, so that that's kind of like tugs on my heartstrings a lot. It's really my passion.
To piggyback off what she said too, I've had a student, well, we've had a student that's a struggling reader, but he has found a book, it's actually Michael Bay. And he's reading it and he's like, he looks, he's like, I think this is the first book I've actually like paid attention to and I'm reading it. So it's cool.
We love when we.
To see when them then finding those books that they connect to and enjoy actually, because before they're just reading diner moving kid.
Right. And we're trying to push them out of their comfort zone a little bit and move them to more complex stuff. Uh, we completed the narrative writing, compare and contrast. Uh, right now we just started our argumentative or persuasive essay. Uh, and so wh- what we will do is we always read Night every year uh by Ellie Wiesel Hall, Cost Survivor. And that one always is just such an eye opener to them. So we will get to that. I'm thinking end of this month, maybe early next. And then we have poetry and figurative language to hit. Okay, our advanced classes, uh ki- kind of the same thing. We try to go deeper and extend further into what they're doing. So same thing with the independent reading. Um, instead of doing a whole group uh novel this year, we did a Uh, instead of doing a whole group, uh, novel this year, we did a split circle. So they had three different book choices and were grouped, put in groups. And then they had discussions on those, just like, you know, I would in an adult book club. So we're trying to get them ready for, you know, ev- everyday skills that I hope they use in their future. Um, we are trying to create a podcast with them still this year. Uh, probably one of my favorite projects this year was the Christmas parodies that they wrote. So taking a Christmas song and writing a parody and then making them sing it and try to sing along to the tune. That was fun for me. Uh, I think it was fun for them too, but, uh. We're working on a debate right now. We are reading about, uh, Lizzie Borden and they're going to be writing a, um, persuasive piece. They are either going to draw out the hat that they have to argue for the side of the prosecution or for the defense. Um, and so I'm excited to see what they'll do there. Uh, we will also read Night with them. That wasn't something that we felt like we should part with them just because they're in our advanced class. They all need to know about the events that happened in the Holocaust. And then the seventh graders are going to read the Diary of Anne Frank so that we can read Night when they get to eighth grade.
Uh, we have, we've passed these around, some of our projects from our advanced kids. So you can kind of look at them and see the love they have for their reading, there's some pictures, so you can kind of, you guys wanna see them? Oh, this is from our advanced, she was just talking about the Christmas parody. Um, the left one is the original and then the right one is a parody, um.
I don't have the sound clip, I'm sorry. You can comment to yourself. So that's the beginning of a little lot like Christmas. And then I think the next slide has, um, the propaganda poster that they created. So, so this was one of their end of the projects, uh, that they did. Uh, and this was over the book, The Testing. So if they did their posta- poster on the viewpoint of the rebel, then they had to write a speech, um, on the government's viewpoint. And so they had to work on understanding different perspectives and how your persuasive language changes depending on who you are and who your audience is. Um, and actually, that's hers right there sitting there and presented earlier, she did a fabulous job.
Yeah, pointy hat.
All right, so usually Audra's GT is a seventh and eighth grade reading class. This is kind of our remedial class. Typically, we, um, select students who are about two or more grade levels below, um, for this class. And basically, we're trying to give them tools to help them get back caught up to where they need to be. Um, they, we, they also do Reading Plus. I honestly don't know a lot about that unfortunately, because sixth grade does that and then her class does it. Um, I do know that we were actually able to kind of push some kids out of this reading class because of the success and growth that they've shown in it. We think a part of that is because that's what we're hoping to see continual growth with these kids. Um, we focus on whole class novels. They are usually gonna be high interest books, um, a little bit on the lower level so that we can meet their needs, but they can still kind of discuss and have those ideas to try and build their confidence in reading. We also built these small groups, so we'll work on, um, a lot of our kids, we noticed, may have difficulties in different areas. So like, it might be fluency, comprehension, decoding, it's an phonics thing. So we try to group them and try to work with them a little bit more one-on-one to help build those skills and that confidence to so that they become better reading. Um, but this is kind of a limited class and you can move or kind of go in and out as the year goes. Because once we see they, something clicks, that light bulb comes on, we notice that like they're soaring better. They don't need to be in there. And so they try to earn their way out now, but say when we see that there's a need from someone in the class that maybe got missed, we can push them back into it and say, hey, we've, we've got some pieces that we need to kind of put together, um, before we go on. Um, so then this focuses mostly, we should put our seventh and eighth grade because sixth grade, they do have a reading class already built in their schedule. But our seventh and eighth graders unfortunately don't. We have to do it in our language class, um, and sometimes we just have enough time in our class to help them. So this does help kind of make up those gaps.
All right, so our, um, program reading, we try to stick with the curriculum as much as we can with making adaptations to fit the needs of our students. So our books are again like the seventh and eighth grade reading club. We try to find high interest books that are just at a little lower level, but we cover all the same skills that they cover in, um, regular in classes. Um, we just kind of slow things down, lower level, and then if there needs to be repetition, we do that.
And to kind of add with what she said too, and to piggyback off what Ms. Kittle said or Crystal said, uh, um, we do have a lot of students that we see increasing reading levels throughout. We do, um, Haggerty, we started doing it, we do letters implementation in the classroom, but we've seen them grow where we're able to see them being pushed out into co-taught settings, um, and seeing them successful in there. Um, we have any graders that I, that we've talked about and he has been doing very task.
I think so far this year, you were able to push two or three into our co-taught.
They've been doing very well. Um, and it's been a good fit and a good switch for that push farther. And I think they're getting even more independent reading done in that class as well. Um, NWA, uh, eighty percent of our students, um, we saw a growth with, um, in their reading levels to go up from the beginning of the year. So that was pretty awesome to see on that too. Some grammar schools we hit. Uh, those are just a small portion. I mean, we've gone through all types of sentence structures. It's, it's pretty much everything that eighth grade, seventh grade, sixth grade classes do. We just kind of do it at a different level, accommodate a little bit. Um, our writing skills hit comprehension questions heavily when we do books as classes. Um, essays we've done, we're doing a practice, our persuasive essay as well, uh, but they've done a fictional narrative in that class as well. Uh, whole class novels, I've done in my class, um, Everlost and Outsiders and Scythe, which is, um, it was a challenge. I think I, I, and it's going well. It's a very high level book. Eighth graders have very high inter- like they really, it, it's tough because they do have lower reading levels, but they're so invested in the high level thinking. Um, we talk a ton about vocab, so I think they're understanding the vocabulary terms. And they are able to converse with me and, and talk with me, so I know they're understanding it. So it's just a lot slower pace, but they understand what's happening is the big thing. I'm kind of looking forward to that.
And then in sixth grade reading, we are reading right now, Night Divided, um, which is a very good book. It's about, um, west and east Berlin and the family, some part of the family goes to the west to try to find a job and, uh, place to live and the wall goes up, so the family's divided and it's just how they get along and communicate. And then off, we also read, read Restart and Stolen Children.
Then we have that, uh, NWA, right, and seventy-five percent of our students have grown in that area as well.
All right, these are some of the things that we just wanted to highlight, some of our, um, like awesome moments. Um, so our first one, this is Jayden Ross. She actually won the St. Genevieve Center Library Movie Story. And remember, they have audio on their website. I have a story, it's phenomenal. I love her, she, this like boosted her confidence so much, it made my heart happy. Um, we have our Sony winners, which are Kennedy, Olivia, kind of went over. And then these are our million word readers, like as of right now, so it's kind of a mix of both seventh and eighth graders. Um, let's see, there's Frankie. Okay, so there's Frankie, Hunter, Jacob, Maggie, Heidi, and then.
And then this is Kirsten, Clementine, and Jersey. And then literally the day after I took the photo, uh, Grace Bird had reached her one million words as well, so I wanted to make sure. And then, um, I think, uh, our middle school presenters were telling you earlier what an awesome kid Hunter is. Hunter's the one that's about ready to reach his two million, probably. He's probably reached it by now.
Hey, real quick on spelling bee, sorry, probably should have said that, but. So the spelling bee, we had how many, we all did a spelling bee in our own classroom. And so then we probably sent twenty-four to Dr. Mercer, who got thrown into it because we had so many snow days. So he did a great job with our spelling bee this year. Um, and then those four, well, the three and then one alternate, they got to go to North County to complete the conference spelling bee. And Joseph Ruttler made it to the top six after like eighteen rounds. Um, and so that's awesome. We haven't had someone go that far in a long time. Joseph was very determined because he's made it the past year. Reese Lifemeyer walked into the SGM's spelling bee and was like, I got out on Motley last year, I'm not doing it. So he's determined as an eighth grader to win next year. Um, but they said the top two at the conference this year, they ran out of the packet words, so they literally got out the dictionary and just started reading a lengthy word. But if you've never been to a conference spelling bee, the words are insane. The kids are awesome, they're able to do this. I mean, I could do it, I'd be way to her.
And then these are just pictures, so we were talking about the independent reading. Um, we took our kids up to the library after Christmas break in January. And this is like their stack of books that they've read to box. So this is Jacob. Like he doesn't even know his books, so it's so crazy. Um, but it's so exciting for us to see these kids with these books and the accomplishments that they are making. Um, but yeah, so we're pretty proud of them.
Yeah, we just wanted you to have a visual of what their stack of books look like. I'm sure the librarian thought we were crazy and maybe.
She probably hated us.
But, uh, she was very accommodating and, um, the kids are so proud standing there by their books. And then I think we had one more slide of pictures with just a few more kids and their stack of books, so.
It's a great presentation. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Right, next on the agenda, we have Prop SG updates.
And that's gonna be Dr. Taylor.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, this picture on the screen is a rendering of what, uh, Bloomsdale Elementary will look like whenever we're finished. Um, it's been very exciting with the groundbreaking out there. And then every time you drive by or stop by, something new is going on. If we could just keep the rain away, something new would be going on much faster. Um, this is of course, uh, the groundbreaking. And I think Bailey has the video taped in here of her drone footage. Um, so we had several students out there in hard hats and I don't think you could find anything cuter than a student with a hard hat and a golden shovel. Uh, we had several visitors. Uh, students, families, faculty and staff, uh, facility committee members, Prop SG campaign committee members, campaign donors, Board of Education members, community leaders, business owners, elected representatives, Brock Miller Construction and KRJ Architects. Um, the students led us in the pledge of allegiance to get us started and then helped the Board of Education members count down to turn the shovel of dirt. This is a secure main entrance, will be composed of approximately fifteen hundred square foot addition. Um, and it allows secure entry and keeps the people in the office safe as well. And Bailey was out there this morning and took some pictures today. So you can see that there's some forms going in for some concrete walls. Uh, and it was, it was very exciting. I know, I think Kelly mentioned earlier that some of the ceiling tiles were coming down. And I know what's going in after the ceiling tiles come down, so it's very, very exciting. The other projects are coming along as well, still in, in planning phases. We are meeting Friday, uh, to get back together with Brock Miller Construction and KRJ, uh, figure out where we are on Bloomsdale and then talk about some, um, updates to the other projects as well. One of the key updates, uh, Mrs. Drury and Bethany Ketting, uh, took a trip back to Orchard Farm to talk to Carrie. Um, who is very knowledgeable and has ran that facility, uh, really, really well for a number of years and brought back some really important updates. And then Friday at our River PD event, uh, I sat down with superintendent at Herculeanum and began talking about our Prop, Prop SG and all the projects. And then they started talking about their early childhood center and, um, how it's run. And then some options, uh, that they presented that might be options for us as well. So, uh, Mrs. Drury and Bethany, I'm gonna get on a phone call with them and hopefully sometime soon we'll visit them and see how they view things there as well. So lots of exciting things going on with Prop SG. At some point, probably in a couple of months, we'll try to bring KRJ and Brock Miller back to give you an update from their perspective and what's going on. But we have run into some snags, there, there always are. Um, I think there's a water line down where the high school gym is supposed to go, that we have to figure out whose it is. And if a DNR, uh, permit needs to be, um, gained before we can do anything. And then we have to work with Citizens Electric to move electric and, uh, so there's, there's always snags and bumps in the road. Uh, but we are working with two quality companies, um, that, that have really good communication. Um, and every time they have a question, they call us or we call them. Um, so it's, it's going really, really well so far. I'll entertain any questions if you have any. Uh, the next one on the schedule is the St. Genevieve Elementary entrance as well as the middle school elevator.
Is that on August twenty-three?
Um, that, are you talking about finish or start?
Start.
Start is supposed to be March, April?
Okay.
March, April.
Yeah, it sneaks up on you pretty quick.
Okay. Do they have to do any relocating like at their Bloomsdale?
Um, the, KRJ's pretty good about getting with engineering and, uh, geotechnical services to determine where all of those things are. I have not heard anything on St. Genevieve Elementary. Um, I've said this over and over at every update presentation I've given, parking is gonna be hard. We're, we're gonna continue to work through that. Um, there are no answers that are going to solve the problem. We can make do and make fit until we get through construction and hopefully come up with some final solutions. Parking's gonna be hard. We've asked KRJ to get in touch with some people that they worked with in the past to do a parking study, uh, to get some people who are familiar with doing that kind of thing onsite to see what we're working with, what's going in and then adjustments that, that could be made or suggested. I have, we have yet to hear back from them. Hopefully Friday we'll get an update on that.
Will be just elementary and middle school too with that elevator going in there.
It's going to be the entire campus because it's a domino effect. As the elementary gets impacted, then it impacts high school in the back and then it impacts middle. It's, it's gonna be quite the challenge. Oh, sorry, I have one more slide. And we have an early childhood meeting at the end of February. Um, I don't know, for whatever reason, this, this is really exciting. I, I think partnering with the community and providing this service to the community has been our goal all along. And it seems like every time we reach a hurdle and we're able to get across it, we're, we're one step closer to that. Um, Geotech has been out to that site and they've done their drilling. Uh, we should talk about, uh, the results of that on Friday and, and get started on where the building's gonna go. I know we have to work with Citizens Electric to determine where their access road is to that, uh, substation back there. Um, and then at some point in the future, hopefully begin talking to all the entities involved and with perhaps, uh, a road extension out to sixty-one.
Question about the early childhood, I think I read that the state, um, has made some funds available to expand early childhood education, but I believe that it has to be open by December thirty-one of twenty-four. I don't know if that's realistic or not, or if that's even applicable to us, but have we looked into that?
We've looked into that already and I don't think that we're gonna qualify, uh, to expand at that point because the facility will most likely not be complete at that time. Um, I know Bethany Ketting and, and Mrs. Drury have also looked at that and to see if we could expand what we're currently doing. Um, we're out of space, which is why we need an early childhood, so.
And we did, I was gonna mention, we just got that thirty thousand dollar grant.
Go ahead, Mrs. Drury.
We have, I know it's gonna pop, so I didn't bring the name, but we wrote a grant for us, thirty thousand dollars and you can renew it for two consecutive years. So for this first year, it's already been awarded. We're actually gonna do the budget entry here this week. And then it's for playground type things. Hopefully that we can take with us to the new building. And then in this, you can try, you can apply to renew it for two consecutive years yet. Hopefully that grant can be thirty thousand dollars, thanks to, the five forty three building. So we are actively looking for grants and money, every time that we can.
I seen, I thought it's, it's a tight timeline and there were some stipulations around it and, you know, low income and you may qualify far, but there's a lot of things, yeah. I don't wanna say red tape, but red tape around the end of qualify far.
And the superintendents groups are pushing for early childhood education preschool to be part of our, the, our, the day with attendance. And so we get funding for those kids after we do our kindergarten, which one. So we're really pushing because people are paying attention to early childhood education. You know, if we're gonna educate them, then we'll call the same.
Do we know if that's been presented to legislature at all?
Um, I don't know. We had the discussion today again, we'd be in trouble.
I'll be happy to send Mrs. Gannon and Mr. Francis an email.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we have the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar. So last month, you were presented with an initial draft calendar for consideration. Just to review our process, we take the current calendar year's calendar and roll that over into the next calendar year and, and make it fit, if you will. Whether it fits nicely or it doesn't fit so nicely, we just put those dates into the corresponding dates in the upcoming calendar year. And that's a starting point. There's a couple of things to keep in mind when creating a calendar. Our calendar committee does a very good job of getting input from our faculty and staff. We send out a survey to them to gather comments as they look at that draft calendar and make suggestions. It's important that we maintain the educational integrity of our calendar and not just create a calendar of convenience. So our, our calendar committee is really conscientious about maintaining that educational integrity. The calendar committee met initially on December 20th to discuss the rollover calendar and develop a plan for the survey. During this meeting, the calendar committee also discussed several ideas regarding adjustments to the new calendar that may need, that may need to be considered. The committee met again on January 31st. After the survey was complete, the survey was open for a week. And then when it was complete, we reviewed the comments that were submitted and finalized a draft calendar for your consideration. The comments were provided to you in your packet. We received a total of 137 comments. 64 of those said, it looks great. So that was overwhelming. There, there were several adjustments that you could just look at the rollover calendar and, and in your mind, you start moving dates around to see what will fit. So I am going to go over some adjustments that we have. The calendar presented to you this evening has some significant differences to the calendar presented to you last month, which I will highlight. The dead period, which was approved by the board on August 30th, 2022, will be from July 29th to August 6th. Julia, it's a little too big.
She's not even touching the keyboard.
Hit, hit Ctrl plus and minus on here.
The new teacher P D days will be August 7th through the 9th. We moved those from Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday to Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday to provide the new teachers with a little more time to get in their classrooms before we come back for all school P D. We then have orientations, additional P D days, open houses, all leading up to the first day of school, which is scheduled to be on Monday, August 21st. That's a little too small. Monday, August 21st is the first day that we can have school. There were a couple of comments on the survey saying, let's move it two days before, and we would love to, but state statute says we can't. So that's our first day of school. The P D day traditionally held on the Friday prior to Labor Day has now found a new home, and it is Monday, October 2nd. There were several comments that there was a big span of time between the beginning of September and then parent teacher conference. So the calendar committee thought it was a good idea to move that P D day to Monday, October 2nd. Parent teacher conference that will then be held after 1:00 PM, after a 1:00 PM dismissal on Thursday, October 26th. We will have no school on Veterans Day, Friday, November 10th. We will have half a day on Wednesday, November 22nd, and that begins our Thanksgiving break. We then go to Friday, December 22nd at 1:00, at 1:00 PM, we will have an early out day. And then we are scheduled to return on January 8th to begin second semester. So you will notice last year, that was on, that half day was on a Wednesday. And then we came back on Thursday, I believe. Moving this half day to Friday gives us a full two weeks for Christmas, which is what we tried to traditionally do. But it also sandwiches those in between two, two weekends on the end and a weekend in the middle, which everybody was excited about. President's Day is on February 19th, which will be sandwiched by our River P D event on Friday, February 16th. St. Genevieve is hosting. That's going to be really interesting with construction and parking. So Dr. McClard is going to have quite the task. And we hear that Windsor wants to get back in to the River P D event. They, they dropped out this year, so it was just three schools traveling to Herculaneum. Windsor wants, we've heard through the grapevine that they, they're interested in coming back in. So that would bring three schools to our campus. We will then have a traditional P D day on Tuesday, February 20th. A lot of times when you go to P D events outside of the district or even to the River P D event on Friday that we travel to, you, you get some good tips and some good ideas to bring back with you, but then you don't get to debrief. Thinking about that idea, going to that River P D event on Friday and then being able to debrief at that P D day following President's Day was really important. Friday, March 29th, will begin our first ever spring break, which will continue through Friday, April 5th. I will talk a little more about how that was possible in just a moment. We were set to return to school on April 8th, but another significant eclipse will occur on April 8th, which pushes our return from spring break to Tuesday, April 9th. Our last scheduled day of school is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, with our last P D day scheduled for Wednesday, May 22nd. Another significant change to this calendar was to adjust how our implement weather days and A M I days are distributed. We had 15 comments suggesting that we move A M I days before snow days. So, and that makes sense if you, if you think about being a teacher and you could use your A M I days upfront and not have any additional days tacked on to the calendar. Traditionally, we have our five snow days and then we start our A M I days. So the calendar committee put our heads together and, and came up with something in the middle. Have two snow days, two traditional snow days first, then get your five A M I days in. And then if you have additional implement weather days, you tack those three snow days onto the end. Last possible makeup day for students is Wednesday, May 29th. Semester's balanced pretty well using this calendar scheme. First semester's 84 days, second semester's 86 days. That was 82 and 89 last year, I believe. We now have a total of 1,097 total student hours of attendance. Last year, we had 11,01.5 hours of attendance. State requirement is 1044. So a couple of years ago, I came across some information from the M triple A schools that indicated we go a significant amount of time over the other schools in our conference. We have 190 contracted days. The next highest school in our conference is 185. The lowest is 179. So some schools are going 179 and we're going 109. Given everything that we've heard on surveys, everything that we've heard talking to teachers, going coming out of the pandemic and, and trying to get back to some kind of normal school, they're mentally and physically exhausted. So coming out of the pandemic, I had this bright idea to put an Excel sheet together and just kind of figure out what taking a day away from their contract would cost. And it turned out in this calendar, we needed two days. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of 450 to 600 plus dollars, depending on where someone falls on the salary schedule. So by approving this calendar tonight, the board would be approving, reducing the number of contracted days from 190 to 188. That still leaves us three days over the next highest school in our conference and still well over the state requirement of 1,044 hours. We are at 1,097. I think this, this does several things. It, it shows our people we care about them. We do care about their mental health and their physical well-being. And this gives back to them and allows them to spend some more time with their family. Couple other things. This will not reduce our current base salary or reduce the salary of any certified staff member. Dr. Fleege is going to be talking about budget in a minute, the February budget amendment. And then as we get closer to the end of the school year, we'll have more budget numbers and have more solid foundation on, on making budget decisions. I know it's always in the board's mind to, to give a raise to the base if we can, increase hourly wages if we can. This allows the board to, in essence, give a raise without adding money to the base. We're, we're taking those contracted days away, which is money that is in the pocket of our employees. So as more details emerge regarding budget, Dr. Fleege and I are going to share information on, on what's possible for the upcoming school year. I did have a talk with Stephanie, called her and kind of brought her in the loop and tried to, to gauge where, where they might be. And I think they seem to be on board. The more you think about it and the more you put it into the calendar and were able to visualize it, the more it just kind of made sense. I've been hearing since I was a teacher, why don't we have a spring break and all the other conferences in our, some, some schools in our conference have a fall and a spring break. There are a couple of variables that go into play there. They, a lot of those schools go more than six and a half hours a day. And when you, when you go 6.75 hours a day, that 0.25 builds up over the course of a year and you're able to use that. Giving our size, given our size of our county, we're not able to do that. You just can't have kids on buses that long. So just wanted to be clear, nobody's trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. This, by approving this calendar, you would be reducing the contracted time of our certified employees by two days from 190 to 188. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Only question really is, I know it's four and a half hours, so I'd say it's not substantial, but it is to our educators and I think that's important. But is our curriculum set to be able to reduce that number of days? Are we going to be okay there? Is that going to mean an adjustment to our curriculum as well?
Well, our curriculum comes from the state and that's not going to be changed. So our teachers, if you think about the number of days that a school in our conference, 179, are attempting to get the curriculum in, and I know our educators, our educators could do it in 179 days. We've always traditionally gone more than the other schools in our conference because we value education. Not that they don't, but we've always expressed that in the number of hours that we go. I'm, I'm fully confident our educators can do that.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. I have no qualms about that. I think that we have high quality educators who can do that. So I'm glad to do that.
I'm always in favor, and I know they're going to like to hear this, of taking something off their plate. And so we're always looking for things that we can reduce the workload and reduce the stress on them. And I, I don't want taking these two days away to add to the stress. And I, I don't think they're going to look at it.
So two less contracted days, no reduction in salary or pay?
Correct. I, I can feel Bailey looking at me, so I'm just going to say this.
Hourly folks.
Hourly folks, yeah. As, as budget numbers become more solidified, we're hopeful that we're able to address those two days that our hourly folks would lose in, in some type of, of pay raising. Dr. Fleege's goal has been to get that to $15 an hour for the last three years, I know. And, and that's, that's still the goal.
I know my goal would be to, I know we're talking about this and this is wonderful. And I've seen the surveys asking for more time off. If we can incorporate a salary increase, that would be wonderful. And you know, set that goal at 16 instead of 15, but we have to be fiscally responsible. But I appreciate it.
And I do want to commend the, the calendar committee. They have, every time I meet with them, they have great suggestions and they're really conscientious about trying to put something together that makes sense for, for our kids and for our employees.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to spring break. Next, we move on to new business on the agenda. And the first item is the amended budget.
Yes. So you all have a budget book. We uploaded it into the docs. So there's significant changes. They may amount, still amount. So I thought I would go through it in a bit more detail so people understand why there's such drastic changes. If you go to page 12 in your book, this is the budget summary for this February amendment and it would have this school year only. Based right now on the revenue and expense projections, it looks like we're going to spin down, it looks like we're going to spend more out of Fund One than we're bringing in because we have to do some transfers. But overall, bringing in the S R three money, which is 1.215 million, we're going to grow our balance to 158,000. So based on these projections right now, that means that we're spending some of the S R three money. But again, we're being aggressive with our expenses, conservative with our revenue projections. So I'm going to talk about some of those. So this is our best guess right now with that approach. My hope is that this balance that we're going to grow, as a reminder, is for the legal fees to battle the wholesome lawsuits. Hopefully, I'm hoping that it is higher and closer to the actual amount we're bringing in for S R three. Does that make sense? Okay. So first, we're going to look at the revenues. And so we start on page 14. With our local taxes, we have reduced the collection rate from 64% to 63%. Local taxes are not coming in quite as high as we thought they would. So that's a reduction in what we think we're going to get at the local level of 283,000. Delinquent taxes are really coming in at a lower rate than in previous years. So we did reduce our delinquent taxes by 20,000. There's no change in the, the Prop S, Prop C money. We left that amount the same. There's a significant change in the financial institution tax. That definition is taxes levied on the intangible assets of financial institutions such as banks or savings and loan associations. When Dr. Lindsay was here, we would get somewhere between 120 and 150,000 in this financial institution tax. There were some changes to the tax laws for banks and loan, savings and loans. So what I've done in the past is use the previous year's actual amount. So last year in this revenue account, we received about 25,000. So that was the amount I budgeted for this year. We've actually received 365, and that is probably all we're going to receive. So we reduced this revenue account significantly. M and M surtax, replacement tax on commercial real estate to replace revenue lost with the elimination of merchants and manufacturing businesses inventory tax. This M and M surtax is coming in lower than projected. So that's a reduction of about 22,000. We did see an increase, our earnings on temporary investments. We did reduce the premium on bonds. We had, we did have 770,000 in there, but that was for the full 10 million for Prop SG. Since the timelines have been adjusted and we're, we're moving a little bit slower than anticipated, we're not going to actually collect all of that 10 million or pull that in and expend it out of this budget. So we reduced those earnings and we reduced the, the bond amount, which you'll see in a little bit. State assessed railroad and utility, a positive here. We increased that by 95,000. No changes in state money. State transportation, which is 5312, if you're trying to keep up with me. State transportation, which is 5312, if you're trying to keep up with me. We had 750,000 in the original September amendment, trying to be conservative. We're still a little leery of going the full amount that the state says we're going to get. So we did increase the revenue on state transportation to 950,000. The legislation session is still going on. If there's a withhold in any of our funding, it will come out of transportation. So we set it at 950,000. We may actually get 1.1 million dollars if they continue to fund transportation as they say they're going to. But we tried to be a little bit more conservative just in case. No change in classroom trust fund. The 5332, the vocational enhancement grant, we reduced that based on the actual amount we sent, we spent in the CTE programs at the high school. Career and technical education is agriculture, business, family and consumer sciences, and automotive. So we apply for this enhancement grant every year for items to enhance the education of those students. So we reduced it based on what we're actually spending. We did see a small increase in the high need fund for special education, so we increased it 11,000 dollars. And our other federal revenue, which is 5497. And other federal revenue are amounts received from federal sources not listed in the Missouri Financial Accounting Manual. For us, that includes community service grants and U.S. Treasury interest subsidies. So we did reduce it 83,000 dollars based on the data that we have collected and the money we have received. And the significant change comes in 5611, the sale of bonds. We decreased from 10 million to 5 million. So that's where the big 5 million number comes from. We don't expect to bring in the full 10 million, again, because the projects have started a little bit slower. Okay? So I'm gonna jump to expenses. And there's a lot of accounts in the expenses.
Were you too far with the transportation?
Yes.
1.1 we're expecting, is that what we'll be paying straight to Fowler? That's our...
That is what the state pays us.
They're saying they're fully funding it?
They fund it at 75%. That's fully funding it. We actually spend more than that with Fowler. 1.4, almost 1.5, yes. So the overall changes in expenses are reduced by 5 million also. But we are reducing revenues more than we're reducing expenses, so we're spending a little bit more out of expenses. So what we're seeing in expenses at the elementary level, there's an increase of about 47,000 dollars just based on additional funds needed for supplies and increases in salaries. High school, an increase of about 20,000 dollars. This is again for salaries. We're seeing an increase in early childhood special education because we opened that third classroom. We had to get furniture and materials in that classroom. Like I said earlier, we decreased the expenses for our CTE enhancement grant. So again, that's BoAg, business, fax, and automotive. We reduced the contracted amount we're paying to Perryville Area Career and Technical Center by about 15,000 dollars, so we have less students attending than we anticipated. We have an increase in speech-language pathologist needs, so that would be 2152. And that increases about 15,000, and it's based on pupil services. Pupil services are, can be contracted agencies or people to come in and work with students to address needs. We see an increase in our behavioral intervention services of about 71,000 dollars. And again, that's, we added, we filled an aid position that's been open, but again, it's contracted. We have some students with some high needs and we're bringing in some behavioral specialists to work with them. Staff training, we saw a slight decrease of about 16,000 dollars. Just less needs and travel and conference fees right now at this time of the year. Instruction-related technology and admin technology services, that is for our tech department. Basically, she moved money out of one account to the other. We got a grant to cover the cost of Chromebooks. I don't remember how many she said, 200? No. 200? Anyway, the grant covers the biggest portion. The district will cover the other portion. So we had to put the expenses in one account and move it out of the other. The Board of Education, we left 450,000 dollars in the legal fees. We spent about 101,000 based on the wholesome lawsuit, the majority of that. We went ahead and left the 450 because we know there's a lot going on. A lot of discussions, a lot of information exchange, so we're just not sure how much that's gonna be, so we left it high. In the board account, we did decrease the election account because we don't have to hold an election. Last year, we spent about 18,000 dollars with the board election and the Prop SG. Typically, if you're not running a bond issue, it's somewhere between 12 and 14. So I do, we decreased it about 16,000 dollars, so that's a nice savings. Payroll services is an increase of 86,000 dollars, and that's judgments against the district. So in March of '20, the IRS put out the COVID-19 employer credits. So we applied for the credits and moved forward with not paying those tax payments, like was allowed. But the documentation was not clear that the tax credits were not applicable in school districts, public school districts could not apply for them. So we have the documentation. We sent in appeal after appeal after appeal, and they were all denied. So we had to pay that tax bill and it was about 88,000 dollars. So we paid that tax bill this year. Maintenance and custodial, we did, we were able to decrease it about 100,000 based on what they've currently spent. But then Davy just came to us and they need something for one of the freezers. Maybe a compressor, I don't know. So we don't think, we'll think, there's still quite a bit of money in there, so we should be okay. Disabled transportation increased about 68,000 dollars. We're running two buses this year instead of one. And non allowable transportation, 2558. There, we did increase it 25,000 dollars to purchase a van for the school district. This purchase was necessary because we contract with Enterprise. And Enterprise raised their van rate from 7599 per day to 13599, which is a 78.96% increase. To rent a car went from 3999 a day to 9606, which is 140% increase. So looking at our historical data, what we spent last year with Enterprise was about 10,500. So we applied the increase and that would increase our costs. Just looking at last year's data, it would go from 10,500 to 22,000 dollars. So we felt it was time to look at purchasing a district van. So we have a maroon van. And we have the white special ed van. And we're gonna take a hard look in June, and if the funds are there, we'll probably buy a third one just to give our people options. And it should also save the district money on mileage reimbursements. So Chrissy Gettinger is gonna manage the van checkouts. So we're working on all of that. There is a significant increase in food prep of 91,000 dollars. This is due to the inflation and the difficulty in obtaining food items. We're still struggling with that. Jordan's doing a fantastic job, but it is costing us a significant amount of money to keep up. There is an increase in the architectural fees because of Prop SG. We increased it 150,000 dollars. And then the big decrease is in facility acquisitions. We decreased that 5.4 million. And again, that's because we think we're only gonna spend about 5 million of the current 10 million in the Prop SG account. And that's a lot.
Yeah.
So that's the big picture. If you go to page 96, that's looking at our balances. It's got the tax rate, the collection rate, how much is paid to the assessor for the taxes, how much taxes we think we're going to collect, and then at the very bottom, it looks at balances as of June 30, 2022, and what we're projecting as of June 30, 2023. So a little bit of growth there. As I said, that's with the S R 3 money. Page 97 is the historical data on our debt service tax rate, and it shows how much we've rolled back for many years. Page 98 is our tax rate history, just so you can see the property assessments and then how much we're putting in operating, well, Fund One, Fund Two, Fund Three, and Fund Four. And then the very last page is the 2022-23 tax rate comparison for surrounding school districts. So we are still fourth from the bottom with Perryville, Arcadia Valley, and Potosee having lower tax rates than we do. Everyone else has a much higher tax rate. And so Dr. Taylor will need this slide in August when he presents the tax rate information. So that's a lot of information. I tried to keep it high level, but with the big difference in the revenue expenses, I wanted to dig in a little bit more this time. Yeah.
Are we still on track for the Tax Commission hearing in May?
Last I heard, that they were going to ask for an extension. It's probably gonna have to be pushed back because the, what's it called, the data exchange, the discovery is taking so long.
Unless I heard with January.
You heard January?
24 now?
Yes.
You know, after the next tax. This budget, even though, I mean, well, with that thank you, with all those differences, still is just 658,000 in the black growing reserves.
Yes.
I know you mentioned it was S R 3 mostly.
Yes. And there is, in addition to that 658, there's always 220,000 in contingency. So if you add that to it, it's more. But we put that contingency money in there just in case.
I certainly hope there won't be any withholdings considering there's a surplus in state budget right now.
We're not hearing anything that there will be, but we always like to plan as if they were, so.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the February amended budget for the 2022-2023 school year as presented.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the CSIP comprehensive school improvement plan.
So this is normally the time of the year where we present and make adjustments and get it approved. We're doing it a little bit different this year. We're looking at it as a whole. So for the comprehensive school improvement plan, excuse me, our goal was to have a document that will guide us through the next five years. I've had the pleasure of being able to look at some of the CSIPS of surrounding schools and grading them for comprehensive. And I've seen a wide variety of some that were a fit of consultant, some that were have a rehash of what they've done before, and others were then just according to S R 6. And plenty of the ones that we've seen that are very comprehensive are also simplistic in a way where they have pillars that guide them and then they have objectives that fall under them that are still big rocks. And then they start to list some of the strategies that are applicable to either the building level or even the district level.
So our goal now, our goal now is to define those pillars and look at those. I originally took our CSIP and put them under our pillars. We looked at those, started looking at some themes, named those themes. And then the next step was to go to our faculty and ask, what do you think our big rocks are? If we want to graduate students that are college, career, and life ready and have the knowledge, skills, and dispositions to be successful in whatever they choose, even if they don't know what they want to choose yet, what do we need to do in the next five years? And so we've gotten a lot of good input. And so I've taken those and compared them over the weekend to what we already had as themes, and they align pretty closely. But the next step is to either get their input through a survey or get input by pulling a committee and redefining maybe some of those themes as objectives and saying, these are our big rocks. For instance, literacy, behavior, SEL, mental health, they're kind of lumped into one. Long-range facilities planning is still a piece of it as well. And so to take those and kind of redefine those objectives. And then I think our goal after that will be to develop a committee of some sort so we can get parental and community input. And then ask that committee, are we missing something? Do we need to rework something? After we get that input, then the next step is to actually look at what strategies do we need? And that's where we get kind of into the planning of, well, what do we need to do to increase literacy? Like, what steps are we taking? Some of those we are already currently taking and we're on track for, but it's a, it's a good way for us to say, these are our priorities, and when other items are pulling for our attention, to come back to that CSIP that was created by everybody and say, well, this is what we originally agreed we wanted for the next five years. So if it doesn't fit within this plan, we're not going to use it unless it fits an emergency or something that we're forced to have to look at through legislation or something like that. So that's, that's the goal, the timeline. We're trying to speed up the timeline. I would like to have it finished by the end of the school year, I think is the goal. So I think the next step was to either, like I said, do the survey with teachers or pull a group together and say, okay, what are our actual big objectives? Do you have any questions over it?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on the agenda is a board resolution to oppose open enrollment in Missouri.
Yes, I believe, I know, there is an open enrollment bill in the Senate and there is one in the House. From what I heard today on a legislation update from the Missouri Association of School Administrators, they're not sure the Senate version is gonna make it out. It doesn't have the votes to currently go through. The House Bill 253, they think has a better chance, but right now it doesn't have the votes either. But that could change in any minute. So Mayor had put out, Mayor is the Missouri Association of Rural, is it Educators? Education, something like that. It's another, like MSBA and Mayor are the two organizations for school boards. St. Jen is a member of both. Mayor put out this resolution to oppose open enrollment and shared it with all of the superintendents across the state and asked them to present it to their boards for consideration. So that's what we're doing tonight. We are presenting this open enrollment bill to you for consideration. We have concerns with the House Bill's version. The Senate, yes, definitely, but, you know.
You're gonna vote on the House, the information that I have here because it tends, I think, about a chance of making it out.
For the first few years, there's caps, and you know, guys, feel free to jump in. There's caps on the number of students you can accept. But over time, those caps go up. But over time, those caps go away. You can choose to accept students through open enrollment, a district can, but you can't prevent your students from leaving. And I think the thing that probably has us most concerned is you don't have to accept students with special needs. That is just not right. And it's a lawsuit waiting to happen.
Yeah, there, there are a couple items that are very concerning. Equity, which Dr. Flea just talked about, and not only for students with special needs or special circumstances, but also socioeconomic equity as well. You have to think about the students that are going to be traveling to other school districts, and just their access alone is something that lower socioeconomic families may not have. Something that came to my mind as I was reading through this bill was, you know, our community has a history of supporting our school district. And our school district has a history of being fiscally responsible and being honest and open with our community. So, now, if, should this bill pass, we are going to be going to our community to ask for a no-tax increase bond issue or to ask for a tax increase bond issue at some point in time. And now, members of our community will be voting on that, and their children will be going to another school district, a possibility. But you have to think about that level of community and that level of trust that you have. Now, what we're going to have, school districts are going to have members of their community that send their kids elsewhere and are going to be asked to vote on tax increase or to continue a bond. That, to me, does not breed camaraderie and community. And, you know, in my hometown, the, the school district was where it was at. That, that's what brought community to it, I, I feel like that's what we do here in St. Jen as well. That's very, very concerning to me. And that's just too, that I'm gonna speak about this evening, too like that.
I think another point brought up by organizations is that it's going to take away, we just got done with River Summit and working with surrounding schools and working as a collaborative group, it's gonna take away from that. It's gonna create more competition. Right now, it's a competitive, we see you on the field, we're gonna beat you, but now, it's gonna be, we're gonna hide how we're doing things that benefit our students. I'm not saying we will do that, but that's gonna create a culture that, I think school districts are gonna have to end up paying for some of the flashier things, maybe more than marketing, like colleges would. And some of that money that would normally be spent for students is now being spent to attract people. And then, I think, I don't think this will affect us, but surrounding areas, it's, schools are the center of their community, and it's gonna affect some of those schools when they don't have enough students to stay open, and then it's gonna affect that community as well.
I have a statement that I prepared for, that I'll be sending to Senator Gannon, Representative Francis. I have to tell him I advocate for, email my legislators, not afraid to.
So, open enrollment refers to the policy of allowing students to attend any public school of their choice, regardless of their place of residence or the school's geographic boundaries. While this may seem like an excellent idea, there are several reasons why I, along with many others, oppose it. Open enrollment creates a potential for overcrowding. If a popular school receives too many transfer requests, it may become overcrowded, leading to a decrease in the quality of education. This can lead to larger class sizes, reduced attention from teachers, and less access to resources, including extracurricular activities. Overcrowding may also result in the school district needing to spend additional funds to build new facilities or expand existing ones. One of the biggest financial questions left in the current proposed legislation is how the funding will flow. Now, another argument against open enrollment is that it can reduce the quality of education across the board. When students are allowed to attend any school they want, then may, may be less incentive for schools to compete and improve their programs. If schools know that they will receive students regardless of their quality of education, they may not feel the need to invest in new programs, technology, or other resources. This can result in a stagnation of educational innovation and a decline in the quality of education overall. I relate to that as all the kids wanna go play football at Alabama, right, because Alabama has the football team. Finally, open enrollment may have unintended, unintended consequences for the allocation of resources. If students are free to attend any school, it may be difficult to predict how many students will attend each school, making it challenging for school districts to plan for resource allocation. This can lead to inefficiencies, with some schools receiving more resources than they need while others left struggling. In conclusion, while the concept of open enrollment may seem like an excellent idea, it is essential to consider the potential unintended consequences. Open enrollment can lead to increased segregation, overcrowding, and reduced quality of education. It may also have unintended, unintended consequences for the allocation of resources. Therefore, it is important for policymakers to consider these factors when considering open enrollment policies. Thank you.
I wanna share the other things, thank you, Josh. I'll be reaching out to our legislators, too, the idea here is choice. But, I mean, between charters, private, public schools, homeschooling, and if you remember, over the past five years, we've added virtual schooling, you have all these choices already. So, if you live in, I don't wanna pick on a small school district, but a very small school district where you can't take calculus or physics or French, you can take those things virtually. Now, that's not the optimum answer, but it is an answer, and that was sold to us as solving that problem. And now, we wanna expand that solution. Dr. Flea just went over all the amendments we had to make to the budget, because the budget is a guessing game. This will only add to the guessing, whether we're gonna lose students, gain students, I mean, of course, I'm prideful, so of course, we're gonna gain thousands of students, but either way, it's a budgeting nightmare. And I will tell you, my personal opinion is this is a piece of legislation that is built to eliminate small school districts. You know, the, you can think of them, they're out there within fifty miles of us. Those school districts that have a hundred, a hundred and fifty kids, that can't offer the classes that we offer, that can't offer the sports that we offer, they will go away slowly, and those communities will die. That's just my opinion.
I'm always love those thousand extra kids, where's the funding coming from? Because it's staying with the local school, or is it staying following?
And that's my last point, this will make poorer, and I don't mean poorer, I mean, you know, they don't have the industrial base that we have here. This will make poorer districts poorer. The, the bill that Dr. Flea referred to, the state, the state funds would follow the student. So, the state adequacy target is six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. I pulled up Desi's website, and this of course varies by pupil, but St. Jenitiv spends, according to Desi, fourteen thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars per student. So, for the students that transfer in, we'll get less than half that. And we'll have to come up with that, because we're not gonna treat them differently. So, that means there'll be less spent for the kids who are here. And Mr. Daniel made a good point, he always does. You know, kids and parents will transfer, I'll read you a quote for sports. This is a superintendent out of St. Clair School District. He says, if this bill goes through, I expect it will lose at least a hundred or more students. Some will go to Sullivan because they have a state softball team. Some will go to Union because they have a brand-new beautiful gymnasium, and some will go to Pacific because they have brand-new weight room facilities, all sports-related. And again, while I'm prideful and I think people will come here for our academics, our sports, everything, that will mean somebody's kid doesn't get to play that sport. So, I am completely and utterly opposed to this.
So, this is why on March twenty-eighth, we're all, are we going to, with the study.
I think, I think that's a point to be raised, too, we were told by our legislators during a superintendent's meeting. What, we don't see you guys up here, we see the other side every day. And so, they're telling us the only way that we have a voice or that they're able to listen to us is that we're up there every day. So, we need, we need everybody that is concerned to be able to actually email their legislators and let them know.
Be parents and.
Please.
Absolutely.
Email Rick Francis, Elaine Gannon, in the northern part of the county, to court them.
Okay, court way.
Send, send you back by court way.
Send you back. They, legislators have hard jobs, there's no doubt. I think someone said, I don't know, if it's here tonight, they need to be a foot deep and a thousand feet long, you know, topic-wise. It was in the MSBA video. So, there's a lot they're looking at. I asked, I asked our legislators for research, I said, send me research that proves that this fixes problems. I don't have any emails.
And on the.
I'll be quiet now.
On the funding, I, I'll, I'll point out, seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of our funding here at St. Jen is local. So, for us, the state money following the student isn't as big of a deal, it's a big deal, but not as a big deal as a school district that is formula-reliant. You start pulling those kids out, they don't have the local taxes to take over and, and sustain that school.
I'll lie, I'm not gonna shut up. You know, we have folks who move here, which is how it works, to, to get their kids into our SPED program and our other programs. And if you can just send your kid here, and you know, I would love to take them all, but that's even a more, higher dollar amount. You know, that fourteen thousand doesn't cover some of those kids, they need higher-dollar services. Anyway, I'm done.
Can you just read what we're actually, what we're doing?
I certainly can. So, this states, whereas the Board of Education has resolved to focus resident taxpayer resources upon the education of students who reside in the district, and whereas no credible research shows that open enrollment improves student achievement, and whereas open enrollment will result in a significant adverse financial impact on public schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the St. Jenitiv County R two School District hereby resolves to oppose any legislation providing for open enrollment in Missouri public schools of non-resident students.
Any more comments? All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution for the Board of Education of the St. Jenitiv County R two School District to oppose any legislation providing for open enrollment in Missouri public schools of non-resident students.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will then be forwarded to our legislators. Thank you very much.
And I'll also put on your radar, if you haven't read Senate Bill Four, the Parents' Bill of Rights, please do so. That adds a lot, a lot on school districts. Some of it we're doing, but the, the amount of information in the short period of time that we're gonna have to do to, to get that information out, I don't know how we do it with our current personnel. So, if you haven't looked at that one, please take a look at that.
I have.
If you wanna see my email I sent Senator Gannon, let me know.
You wanna read Senate Bill Four, here it is. For those teachers who are sitting in the audience, it adds more for you to do, and how much funding comes with it?
Zero.
Zero, okay, we're really on our soapbox now. But it's very important. That is all the new business, next, we have adjourned to executive closed session. I'm gonna keep.
I thought you weren't done. All right, we have that state. All right. I make a motion and revise Missouri Statute six one zero point zero two one. I motion that the Board of Education adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote after a short break, the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items of business. Hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees, scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals. So, we will have a roll call vote. Yes, sorry, we're second. We have a roll call vote. Sorry, Gannon. Okay. Okay, roll call vote. Jamie Blue? Eric Fosler? David Bova?
Yes.
Geraldine Diesel? Yes. Josh Gettinger?
Yes.
James Kirshner? Martha Reese.
It was a long one, thank you all.
Thank you all for coming.